No state has been hit harder by coronavirus than New York.
Chaos and mayhem.
That food is delivered to families accordingly.
The state has seen the fastest growth rates in the world. On Thursday, the numbers soared to more than twenty-three hundred coronavirus cases. And eighty-three.
The world getting scary. I just hope you hear me calling out. My name. What's going on? Is it me or the world? Is it too big to change? If it's not there, how can I? Cause everything just gets so bad that it's not even fair right now. The kings are dying. The world is straight away. I'm trying to believe in something strong enough to make it go away. And I don't wanna die not loving my brother. And I don't wanna die not loving my sister. And I don't want her dying not loving my family. And I don't wanna die just holding my hands up. I don't wanna die knowing it could have been love. But great things that we said and hating each other. And I don't wanna be alive to fear of my first step. And I don't wanna be alive not loving my last breath. We take action on our own. I think that love's some way to go. I think that. I think that. I think we can make it up. If we help each other up. I think that.
When I think of just my generation as a whole, I feel like information dissemination has been key because we have been hearing so many different things on this, primarily starting with the idea that it just doesn't affect our generation. And really not expressing the expansiveness of who could be considered immunocompromised. And even turning back to your point, to asthma, to all of these things that you may not make the connection between as having a compromised immune system and the one piece of advice that had been given to me and that we had heard that I thought was so essential and goes to the essence of what's been said is the idea that don't walk around as though you're trying to prevent yourself from getting Corona. Walk around as though you already have it and you're protecting the other people around you. And so that's the extensive level to which you have to care for the people around you.
I don't wanna die not loving my brother. I don't wanna die not loving my sister. I don't wanna die not loving my family. And I don't wanna die just holding my hands up. I don't wanna die knowing it could have been love. But great things that we said and hating each other. I don't wanna be alive to fear of my first step. And I don't wanna be alive not loving my last breath.
Regardless of whether you think you can be affected and as you've said, it's been proven from all the cases that we're seeing unfortunately that people that we didn't think were going to be as direly affected are really going through it. And so that has been the piece of advice and I'm grateful to be in a position to be socially distancing, but it's also if you have the privilege to socially distance, we're doing it for on the behalf of the amount of people that don't even have the opportunity to do so.
You know, first and foremost, we just gotta take it more seriously. You know, Fat Joe made some points, you know? And I just feel like we just gotta take it more seriously and I feel as though it's literally a global pandemic. You know, it literally cannot get more serious than this. So, but you know, obviously at first through social media, like via Twitter, Instagram, you know, coronavirus first originated as one big joke. You know, it was everybody literally took it as a joke. And it was at first, you know, us as black people, we can't get it and us as young black people, we really can't get it. So, so many, you know, folks around my age and even younger, you know, weren't taking it as seriously as it should have been, you know, from the get-go versus, you know, it taking like actual people that we know and we love getting it. You know, my best friend, his dad has it and he's in the ER. You know, it takes like those, those personal cases that we know in order for us to take it more seriously. So I just feel like we just gotta obviously self-quarantine, you know, stay away from each other, stop social gathering like some homies hit me up in a group chat like last week, like, you know, what's the move? Like the move is the crib, bro. You know what I'm saying? And you know, I just feel like that's, that's a huge thing with it, just socially distancing.
One of the most important things that we're gonna come back to, even if it's a part two to this conversation, is the things that we can do, the importance of the health wellness, the understanding the responsibility that we have in our bodies that God made to make sure that now that we know the fact and we know that we could just be killed at any time because all of the sugar and all of these processed foods pumped in our community, all of this is by design, yo. Y'all on the vote, you're not on CNN, emphasis is black home state. All this stuff was by design, it's not conspiracy theory, none of that, you know? But we have to take responsibility. We have to go back to our ancestral roots and understand that we have cures for this. And when I talk, one of the things we're not talking about is we're not talking about how we build up our immune system during this time. How do we fight against it? We can't just lay and sit back. We have to change the way we're eating. We have to change the way we're living. There's no other choice, that or die. And so we will continue that conversation, but I wanted to make that statement though.
Last word.
Please let me be a part of that conversation. Please let me be a part of that conversation, cause I take,
Yes, sir.
you know, supplements, vitamins, alkalides, alkalizer drinks, alkaline, alkaline, machine con water. I have a very alkaline diet. And you know what I'm saying? I love to share like all the things that I do, you know, I haven't been sick in a long time.
We are talking about structural racism that is so embedded that when black folks show up at the hospital presenting with symptoms, they are being turned away. Why? Because they have been taught that we have higher thresholds for pain. It's why we have a black maternal mortality crisis. So the reality is that because of the ecosystems, social hierarchy and stratification, every socio-economic racial fault line is being worsened in this moment. Black folks have been slowly dying for a long time based on a political carbon monoxide poisoning. And now it's just happening with a blunt tool and a club.
Damn. Well, look, that's powerful. One of the things that I think we're facing is a triple crisis. We have a public health crisis, which has now brought on economic crisis, which could bring on a democracy crisis if it winds up messing with the election, but the economic crisis.
We had the economic crisis first.
Exactly.
And then on top of that is the health crisis. At the end of the day, when we start to talk about solutions, this is the start of a conversation. It's important like, you know, my grandmother always told me to just listen. So today, everybody, we're getting a chance to speak freely. But it's, it, it, believe me, any change is going to come back to economics and us understanding our economic power. And in us holding on to our economic power with the power that it has and that it possesses in order to make change.
Maybe a young person might be able to deal with the virus, but I tell you what, if you got an asthma inhaler in your pocket, I don't care if you're 25 years old. You not as strong as you think you are in the face of this virus. So even our young people have to be careful and also be careful for our older people, but thank you for being here.
Let me, let me do this. I wanna give the people who are actually on the ground some credit. Alright, so you got Desmond Me down in Florida doing the work. You have people like Vet Cartel and Antonio Moore, ADOAS, doing the work, right? You have our Surgeon General Jerome Adams doing the work. What it's gonna take is for black people to show the solidarity that we have and we've always had. And right now, what we need us to do is to simply be selfish with our own personal health first, because that's what's gonna truly protect your sister or brother. Taking care of you first, making sure that you're inside, that you're quarantined. And what I have to say to the artist in this moment, a lot of times we hear artists aren't important. We hear entertainers and athletes have no voice, but no one is as important right now because we speak directly to the people. Muddy Waters didn't have to ask for active Congress to do champagne and reefing. So he was sixty years ahead of legalization curve. Right now as artists, what we can encourage people to do is to simply do what our grandparents told us to do when it was a storm. Be quiet and let the Lord do his work. I believe if we sit in our house, if we do stuff like plant a tomato seed right now, learn how to grow something, catch up on my reading, truly connect with our children, call your loved ones that just like pass over, which is going on now, some of this will pass over while the experts like Jerome Adams and Surgeon General and others figure this out. We don't quite know what's going on, but we know we're bearing the brutal blunt end of this. And what artists can do right now is constantly remind people to stay in. I gotta shout out to artists like Lil Duvall, who does it on a daily basis. Artists like my brother T.I., who makes sure people know. And all the artists up and down the coast, both coasts are doing that. So I'm going to continue to do that. I'd like to encourage us all and while you inside, fill out your census papers. And that's for regular people, forget artists and athletes. While you're inside, let the world know we are here so we can have proper representation in legislation. So when these things happen, we have someone advocating under those gold domes for us. Let's make sure if you can't get to a ballot, that you do your absentee ballot till you figure out, making sure your vote is cast. Because now we see this is more critical than ever, who we have in office. So I appreciate the time for talking. I appreciate the other artists that are doing the work and everyone that is on this phone, including but not limited to the workers that are out there on ground level in hospitals, from doctors to nurses to the people cleaning these rooms. Thank you, thank you, thank you. And ultimately guys, do not forget the prisoner in these times because Jesus would certainly not do that himself. All the work needs to be, we need, the voices that we have online now are important. And they're important because they speak and point to the voices that are doing the ground level work. So my man Desmond Me down in Florida, who has the Florida Rights Restoration Pym, ADOAS, them. The SCLC is still out here pumping them. We need people on the ground informing us. So one time, one thing we need to do is politically require more of the politicians. We like personalities, but we need policy. We want policy that directly interjects jobs, healthcare, all this into our community. So let's demand that. The other thing is we need to go back to centralizing power in our communities. That means we should be, we should be making sure that our kids are going to colleges for trades in medicine, law and things of that nature. And we need to bring that right back to our community and we need to service those people with our dollars. And the other thing is that African Americans, if we're truly going to be independent, we have to start producing something. I don't care if that's a plant in your yard or clothespin to put on a diaper and hole in a whole factory. But as a community, we're gonna have to get more self-determined. There's gonna be a friend of mine named Kenny Russian called me. He's in the real estate in Tampa. He said, Mike, there's gonna be blood in the water and there're gonna be deals everywhere. So brother, don't go buy a new car, save up and buy some apartments and put your people and them in an affordable rate they can afford and put a nursery there so that the working mothers can come home and get their children directly, just like a woman does here in Atlanta. So we're gonna have to, and I'm talking to athletes and entertainers. It is time to become the business class of our community, to our community. It is time we, we, we be led by the grassroots people and not just the people who put on TV, but the people that are doing the work like Paul's Kids, which is right next to Bankhead Seafood, which tipping our own. There's a young lady that runs a charity that's been feeding kids through this whole pandemic called Paul's Kids. So I'm looking for leadership right on the corners and situations I'm in. And I'm looking for us, the people who have the means now to enter into compassionate capitalism and go into businesses and go and cycle the dollar in our community.
Let me back you up on that before we go to Big Sean. You know, I said before that we had, Robert Smith has already created an app to go alongside of what Diddy is talking about. It's called the COVID-19 Small Business Loan Accelerator. You can get this app, it's called the COVID-19 Small Business Loan Accelerator. And literally you can hit a button and it's gonna populate forums for you and help you get ahead of the game. So between Diddy and Robert Smith, we got people who know how business works, trying to empower our community. So that's beautiful. Also, you know, you said Killer Mike, the importance of artists. I don't think there's more, a more conscious artist and from a city that's more beloved or more undisputed than Big Sean coming out of Detroit. Some of the numbers out of Detroit have been horrific with regards to this virus. I know there's a brother that walks through that puts his arms around people, has been in the community. This is not somebody who's just a star. He's a hero in the community. Talk to us about what's happening in Detroit right now. What's your heart feeling like and what we can do to help?
I mean, honestly, what's going on in Detroit is, just to put it in perspective, my mom's best friend died like a couple of days ago. Couple of my best friends that I grew up with, went to high school with have it. More than half of my team from Detroit whose parents have it. So it's something that has been spreading at an alarming rate. Obviously, we know that yesterday, seven hundred workers at Henry Ford Hospital, you know, tested positive for it by taking care of the patients there. And let me just put it in perspective, at the beginning of March, I mean, like the last couple of weeks of March, I was in Detroit myself for just like, you know, my family and doing stuff and, you know, working on my album and there was two cases there. So that just, we put it into perspective now, Detroit is one of the hotspots in the whole country. And on top of that, it's a lot of death tolls, you know what I'm saying? So it's really something that, another, another thing is that one of my friends who I know has it, you know, he was down for a few weeks and then I saw him outside and I'm like, yo, bro, you don't need to be outside, you still spreading it. Like you can't go see people right now, you really have to make sure that you're taking the right precautions. So I want people to know that even if they haven't, think they get better. You know, as people who've had it for four weeks and think that they got it, like no, you still are, you know, a carrier of that virus and you can still easily spread it. And I think that's one of the misconceptions that's going around in my city is that like, okay, well, I had it, I stayed in and I was done, but no, it's not done. You know?
Yeah. You know, it's an unbelievable situation. You know, Shaka Singor, who obviously, you know, one of your big fans and native son of Detroit, has done such a brilliant job of trying to get masks into prisons and working with Reform Alliance, working with Jay-Z, Meek Mill and others. That we're all passionate about and concerned about.
Shaka, God bless Shaka.
Yeah, Shaka Singor, God bless him. But you know, when you as an artist and somebody who has a platform, what would you say to other artists? To sound the alarm because to your point, even people who should know because they have the virus are not necessarily doing the right thing. What can other artists do to spread the word?
I mean, besides, you know, I think other artists can just, you know, let it be known, obviously lead by example by staying in, but also encourage people to, you know, that this is a time of exploration of interspace, you know what I'm saying? This is a time to where, you know, you really can discover your passion and not be led by the, you know, the lights of society, the ego, the, you know, this is a time for you to really go within and discover your passion. So I feel like, you know, not just staying in because, you know, the thing is, is like when you stay in and people can look at it, it's like, oh, that's boring or whatever, whatever, but I'm, but when you stay in, this is giving us a time that we've never been able to experience. Obviously, it's a time of tragedy, you know, but throughout time, we've always made lemonade out of lemons, you know what I'm saying? This is a time of self-discovery, a time to really heal and a time to look within, you know what I'm saying? So my, you know, to other artists, I just feel like to the platform that we have, like I don't know how many followers I got out of around, you know, on different platforms, but you know, I put out a, I definitely put out like a list of books that I was reading. I put out, you know, I've been painting, I've been doing things. Obviously, I've been also working on music, cause the music is in my house, but I've just been staying like self-contained and, you know, preaching that and letting them know that there are other factors and other things that we can do right now.
Yeah, and using the time, actually having the time for us rather than just, you know, sitting up here and let the days go by. You know, another, somebody who loves.
Man, I wanna say on that, that that is very important that we use this time wisely. You know, this is all God's combined order and he's not giving us this time to waste it. And we are put in this position, our backs are up against the wall to figure it out. We're starting the conversation and having the discussions, but we have to be a part of the solution. And sometimes you have to, in order to that greatness, you have to be isolated. And that's what, that's what's happening to us now. And I would say to the hip hop community and to the younger generation, is, 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 to be honest, is, is your world. And, and, and you have to protect it and you have to take it. I've never seen nothing like this and I've seen a lot of things. And I actually, I've actually, to be honest, I've gone through it. When Ken passed away last year, pneumonia, nobody knew what it was and it was out of nowhere. And, and you know, I was put on a real serious timeout. And I used that time to really, really reflect and to really, really look at who's important in my life and, and, what do I wanna do? Because we still have responsibilities. We still have a destiny. We weren't just sit here, sent here to be slaves. We weren't sent here to be the last on the totem pole. We were sent here to one day to stand up and to fight for ourselves and to fight for ourselves in the right way, through our intelligence, through our mind, through our compassion and through our hearts. So please, I just wanna add on to that, to meet the most powerful culture in the world, the hip hop culture. Let's use this time wisely and think about how we can help others and think about how we can save ourselves as a whole community. All the races, everybody together, but we gotta put that mask on first. Even on the airlines, they tell you put that mask on first and we have not been doing that as a people. And that's what I want us to start doing. Let's put that mask on first, isolate ourselves and let's use this time wisely to connect with God in a way like we've never connected before. To find the cure for this and also the cure for, and to break the curse. Cause this has been, this has been an ancestral curse. And it's time for us to break the curse and it has to come from within. So if you could dig me and you're not freaking, you know what I'm talking about?
Yes, man. Everything you're saying. And I just wanted to add on to that, Puff. I just wanted to say, Puff, like, to add on to that, like, we'll never get another time like this in history ever again. You know what I'm saying? So it frustrates me when I see people talking about, I'm bored. Yo, you know how many things you could be doing like in the house now? It's different if you can't provide for your family. There's people out here that's going through the most terrible times of their life right now.
Thank you for doing this, first of all.
Yes, thank you.
I think, I think, I think this is a perfect time for us to really, really look at the truth. Like this is, this is, this is a catastrophe that we're dealing with. And black people, for all intents and purposes, are like sitting ducks. Like we need to start thinking as a village, we need to start thinking as a collective. You know, because my dad, my dad tested positive for it and I believe, he works at the, at the post office. So a lot of these blue collar workers, they don't feel like that they have the black fellowship to fall back on. So they're willing to go take the risk and go work those jobs and put themselves in the line of fire. You know, I just think that we need to, we need to focus on ourselves year round. Not just when it's like, you know what I'm saying, like a disaster. We need to focus on ourselves year round, focus on our community year round, like a lot of, Killer Mike was saying. Like if it's building schools, I mean, I, I mean, we got, we got everything we need within our community. I think we just need to focus on us and we need to stop letting people make us feel uncomfortable with loving ourselves. You know, like we're thinking as a collective, but we say anything that involves us coming together, they go out of their way to let you know how uncomfortable they are with it. Well, I'm uncomfortable with them being uncomfortable with it because I'm just tired of things affecting us in a way that they don't affect anybody else. And I'm tired of looking to the hierarchy of the government to help us out. I think we need to start putting systems in place that are gonna offset some of these systems that are put in place to destroy us.
Right. Why you think it's spreading so fast in Detroit, bro? Like, why, like, I don't really get it. You know, that's something I don't even, I don't know if we had answers to.
I think it's possibly a lack of information, but it's also how many people are marginalized, like they're put in certain areas. And you know, like just the foods that are already available to them, you know, like the high volumes of sugar and stuff that's in the foods and all of these things that kind of break down the immune system. And this particular virus just seems like a virus just specifically attacking that. You know what I mean? So you know, you're talking about something that can lay dormant in your system for two weeks, the first two weeks, without you having any symptoms, but you can also spread it. And then when it's time to attack, it's attacking the weakest others after we spread it all around, you know? So it's really like, really tricky.
How do you see it, Dr. Jess, the psychological dimension of what has to happen?
Yes, thank you so much for having us. I think it's important, Diddy, you have always been in front of this, so thank you. You know, I think it's important for people to really understand that right now, the focus is to end this pandemic, right? So we all are practicing or should be practicing extreme social distancing. And so one of the things that I encourage people to do when they're in their homes, you know, is to really use that opportunity to be still. Okay, I know it can sound really cliche, but being still is an opportunity for you to address anything that's been holding you back from your past. You know, someone mentioned earlier, an opportunity to really read up on different books. Actually, I would recommend three different books right now if people wanna understand the, the social implications of how our health is, you know, affected differently as black people. And that would include medical apartheid. You can learn about the longstanding history of experimentation on black bodies. Also, The New Jim Crow, if people are trying to understand what the hell is going on with our mass incarceration and what does that really, what does that really indicate? It's an excellent book to read. Also, The Color of the Law, to learn about what segregation actually did for our housing. So this is an opportunity for people to really read up and become more learned, alright? But it's also an opportunity for you to use technology in a way to stay connected, right? There's Zoom parties, I was on one earlier, you know, celebrating my aunt's birthday. There, you know, it's FaceTime, there's a way to stay connected in a meaningful way so that you aren't suffering from the impact of social isolation, which again can lead to depression, anxiety. You know, it can, it can have a lot of implications there that are negative.
Fat Joe, you have been so passionate on this. And you know, you're somebody who generations of hip hop folks have just loved and admired. Why did you jump on this so early? A lot of people were sleeping on it, you were never sleeping on it. What made you understand from the beginning the danger of this?
Man, I just knew that it was, it was, it was, it was a serious thing and I'm, I'm, I'm always watching. So I was watching what, I don't wanna point to finger at nobody, but I was watching what it was doing in China. And I just knew it was gonna come over here. And I was just wondering when was they gonna, you know, and then, you know, they were saying it was a hoax. They were saying that it was this and that. And I just took it really, really serious. And because I'm pre-diabetic and they said the underlying illness, I turned around and said, yo, hold up, they ain't catching me out there. I ain't gonna get caught slipping. So I've been in the crib, I've been in the house, my mother and father's quarantined, they can't leave the house, nobody. So we've been following all the rules and trying to do the right thing. And then mostly just use our voices like we doing now, but just use our voices to just let our people know. Because you know, we talk to a different, you know, we talk, we, we cut all that, all that gray area and we talk straight to the most vulnerable people. And so I said, yo, we gotta start something, we gotta talk, start talking to everybody. Cause maybe they'll believe it if Fat Joe tells them, stay in the house, chill, you're gonna get your parents, you know? And this, let me tell you something. Every single, I asked Dr. Oz today, has he ever seen a more infectious virus in his life? He said, no. And anybody, anybody that wasn't listening to me, every one of my friends that I told stay home, listen to this, that, every single one of them caught the coronavirus. Every single one of them, who was like, yo, Joe, it's three dollar margaritas. Yo, Joe, we out here, yo, we, 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 and they all caught it. They all caught it and now people's parents are dying, you know, a lot of people dying in New York. You know, we from New York. So like, that's the war zone. So every day I wake up to four people I know dying. I don't even wanna look at the phone. Like when I pick it up in the morning, it's like, yo, do you know the security guard, Said? Do you know this guy Danny Vargas? Do you know Marisol's mother? Do you know, it's just killing people.
Think of your neighbor, think of your community, you know? We all gotta stick together, especially in times like this. If you got some older folks like in your neighborhood and your apartment building, you know, go out, grab them groceries for them. Even if you're not in a position, you know, to physically or monetarily help somebody, it can be something as small as like, hey, bro, you know, the Piggly Wiggly restocks on toilet paper tomorrow at eight AM. You know, just spreading the right information. And you know, taking it seriously and using this extra downtime to better yourself. You know, I've been in the house, you know, just thinking, plotting. Not everybody has the luxury to, you know, use this time, this downtime, you know, to think or meditate. A lot of people are going through the worst time of their lives, you know? But if you do have that spare time to do that, you know, just try to embed yourself in whatever way you can. Come up with game plans, make a vision board, write down your goals or, you know, just anything. But just take this as seriously as it should be. It is literally a global pandemic. It's like the worst virus spread since the nineteen eighteen flu. We, I haven't seen nothing like this in my life. Y'all never seen nothing like this in y'all life, so we should take it.
Nobody alive there.
And help and uplift one another.
Dr. Jess, does that sound like good advice to you? And what would you add to it before we, before we give Yara the last word? What would you add to that?
Yeah, that's, that's excellent advice. You know, I think one thing that, that black people need to understand is that we are more likely to carry illnesses, right? That stem from all of these social factors that many people have talked about. So it's not just a disease that's affecting old people. If you have asthma, if you have diabetes, the sugar, if you have. If you have asthma, if you have diabetes, the sugar, if you have high blood pressure, hypertension, right? If you have, you smoke, th- these are risk factors that can make you more likely to end up with severe illness. So that's another reason why practicing social distance is going to be important. You know, I would even encourage people to really understand if you're going to wear the mask and the gloves, you got to make sure you're washing your hands. It's not just about having the mask on, touching your cell phone and all these other things, right? You got to make sure you're practicing adequate hand washing. And, and at the end of the day, when it comes down to our psychological and psychiatric health, it's going to be very important to just maintain a good overall health. Make sure you're prioritizing getting as much sleep as you can, right? Make sure that you're getting the vitamins that you need to try to boost your immune system. Stress kills our immune system, right? Stress is what makes our immune system not function well. So you want to try your best to move around in the house, be as active as you can. And to, uh, you know, your point, if you're not able to, I think there's so many frontline workers who are not just healthcare workers, right? It's our postmen, UPS people, you know, it's the people working at, um, you know, our, our grocery stores. It's going to be important that we do this so that they can continue to support us, but that they can also be healthy for their families.
Well, listen, all that was good advice. I hope somebody was writing that down, that, that should be posted. That, that was, that was literally like a roadmap to how to get through this healthy and, and with our minds in a good place. Yeah, Yar, you are, you know, healthy, you're, you're brilliant, you're well-connected. Um, what advice do you have? There might be somebody sitting there saying, hey, it's easy for you guys, but you know, I, I'm scared, I don't know what to do. What, what can, what would you say to one of your peers, uh, who just now really understanding tonight that this thing is real?
Absolutely. I mean, I, I think the advice that's just been given has been pretty perfect and essential to listen to. But when I'm thinking of being in conversation with my peers, I'm grateful to be in a peer group that's been very responsible. But the one thing that we've done for each other is exemplify what it really means to be a support network, which again goes back to the fact that this time exemplifies no action is too small. That call to your friend to check in to see how they're doing, that call to say, okay, I'm making an essential grocery run. Is there anything that you need? Those do save lives and, uh, a lot of it has been how can we continue to remain, um, in support and in communication and of service to one another? Because all of our needs are inevitably different. And I think as much as this has been referred to as the great equalizer, we have to acknowledge the difference in everyone's position and try our best to respect it. And if we have the opportunity to and the resources to, find ways to bridge the gaps of inequity that I think all of this systemic inequity has been very prevalent, uh, right now.
You know, just one, one more thing, you said you've got a responsible network of people that really know how to help each other. Um, and that's really something that, I mean, all of us have these cell phones or people in there that we had beefs with five years ago, people we broke up with seven years ago. Isn't it, isn't it a good time to reach out to folks and start healing some of this stuff and just say, I'm just worried about you? I'm just, I'm just, how are you doing? I mean, am I, am I right? It shouldn't, if, if, if a global pandemic is not an opportunity for you to reach out to somebody who you love or who you used to love and, and heal that, then is, am I right, Yar?
Absolutely. I mean, I even think of it spreading as a sign of us not, us ignoring the fact that we are inherently interconnected. The idea that when it happened across the globe, it was like, well, that was a them problem and now it's an us problem. And, and so I think it is essential that even on an interpersonal level, we begin to, to reinstate the interconnected nature of how we operate in our community.
Yeah.
Man, I want to jump on that and, and, and say that, um, there's a cure and that cure is love. That cure is love. If, if we, if we all look, if we all really look out for each other, that, that's a different type of virus. That's called a love virus. If we, we can't love, we can't love nobody else if we don't love ourselves and we don't love our tribe first. Um, this isn't about, just, just about talk. I'm committed to keep on putting out the information because the information is the currency, but it has to start from within. Every person that's listening to this has to spread this gospel, you know? Because we have to look out for each other and, and, and to, to be solution-based, as we talk about these deaths, it's going to get worse, it's going to get worse, y'all. And, and, and we're going to have to, you know, batten down the hatches and we're going to have to really tie into our faith. And, and, um, the way that we could stop it from getting worse is by isolating ourselves, by respecting what it is, by also just looking and doing research on solutions. Shout out to Dr. Sabi, you know what I'm saying? We have different people out there that have, that, that come from our ancestral magic. Uh, if we start to love ourselves, we'll start to see and feel those visions. Even my Latino brothers and sisters, we're not talking about no, no, no voodoo or no magic. We talking about love and we talking about things that God gave us from the earth. And we have to be smarter, we have to be a smarter people, we have to break the cycle and that's all in love. That's number one. Number two is, 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 um, economics, the, the, the economic factor, we have to stop ignoring it. We have to stop letting ourselves get pushed out of the way, not, not, not getting our fair share. We're coming for our share, fair share. America, we want our fair share and more and everything we deserve. We built this coun- country. The way we're being treated is beyond a race issue, this is a human rights issue. If this was going on anywhere else in the world, dictators would be hung, okay? So this is something that's real, we have to understand the power of our economics. We have a power in that and we have to reset that and we have to put out a new plan. These are solutions. The, the, our prison population, we cannot turn a blind eye to that. There's just no way they're going to survive and it's going to be one of the greatest disasters in, 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 since, since we, since we've seen, since we've seen, you know, going, going back to the times of Hitler, you know? It's, it, it's that bad, it's that evil. And we need to wake up and we need to love ourselves. I'm not giving y'all no shock value, I'm giving it to you real. We are, are, are making up more than half of the deaths. And the way we have to do that, we have to accountability and we have to start to change from within and within our communities. And hopefully tonight, I know not hopefully, tonight has been the start of that. And, and, and yes, this is a conversation, but I promise you, I will, I will follow it up with action, where whoever wants to get down with the smoke and make some changes and make a difference. Because I'm tired of this, man, enough is enough.